I'd like to call the board meeting to order. If you would stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united, in the business of liberty and justice.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Welcome to everyone in the audience tonight and everyone who will be watching at home. Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll, please.
Trustee Carter.
Present.
Trustee Mariscal. Trustee Kazam.
Present.
Trustee Gett.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
Trustee DeVor.
Present.
Okay, nearly everyone here, so it's good to see everyone. We would be at item four, approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting on June 16, 2020. I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is a second. Any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. I did forget to mention that the setup in the room looks a little bit different tonight. We're airing on the side of caution. Once we reopen the building, we were back to our normal way of doing business, but since the COVID seems to be coming back a little bit, so we want to be very careful. There are masks available for anyone who would like one, but we as a board are also distancing ourselves a little further than normal. I do have one announcement. Chief Walters, if you'd help me with something.
Sure.
Welcome, everyone. Who all do we have here? I know your family, Bobby.
Yep, Zoe, Pierce, and Becky.
All right, welcome, everyone. This is a bittersweet time because we're here to recognize someone for their service, their service to the community. You know, the Heights is built on volunteerism, and we have been so blessed to have Bob Hill with the Peoria Heights Fire Department for a long time, and also, he was a former trustee on the Village Board. So, we're sad to see him leave. We wish him the best, and words can't express our appreciation, but I will try by doing a reading of proclamation that we've written up. So, a proclamation of congratulations and appreciation to Bob Hill for 29 years of service with the Peoria Heights Fire Department. Whereas Bob Hill began serving the citizens of Peoria Heights on July 21, 1991 as a volunteer firefighter with the Peoria Heights Fire Department, continually rising through the ranks to his current position as deputy fire chief. And whereas, Bob Hill also served this community as an elected member of the Peoria Heights Village Board from 2009 through 2011. And whereas, Chief Hill has served besides four fire chiefs and is highly valued as a leader who is constant, who is a constant threat of stability, knowledge, and creativity that helped the department progress. And whereas, the village of Peoria Heights has been fortunate to have such a dedicated firefighter who has served and protected the citizens of the community for 29 years. And whereas, on July 21, 2020, Bob Hill will retire from the Peoria Heights Fire Department. Be it therefore resolved, the Peoria Heights Village Board of Trustees hereby congratulates Bob Hill for his 29 years of service and expresses sincere gratitude for his outstanding service to the village and his community.
Thank you.
I can't let you sit down yet. In my eight years as fire chief, we've had issues back and forth. Bob has been my rock. Kind of a yin and yang kind of thing, because my mind goes this way, his mind goes that way, but it comes together with a great ending. I am saddened that he's leaving the fire department, but I'm extremely happy for him and proud for him to be on that retirement roll. It's something we all look forward to as we get in our older years. So, Bob, you know where my heart is, and congratulations, my friend.
Thank you, Chief.
Didn't know this, did you?
I had one prepared for Saturday.
Well, you're gonna have one.
I just wanted to say that I really enjoyed my time with the fire department and then being part of the village. I've met a lot of people throughout my tenureship, both up there and out in the firehouse and all the people we meet out on the streets. So, the fire department's a great entity for the village. I encourage you to keep the fire department and make it as good as it can be that we can afford to do. So, thank you again for this proclamation, and you guys have a good day.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, all. Okay, we would be at comments from the audience. If you'd like to address the board, please come forward to the podium if you would give your name and address, and please try and keep your remarks under five minutes. Comments are open. Any comments from the audience? Going once, going twice. Comments from the audience are closed. We'll go right into trustee reports. The first is Public Works. Trustee Carter.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I make a motion to approve ordinance 2020-1630.
Cheryl, what's, if there's anything new you have to report on, we'll come right back to that.
See, I was so excited. I had so much on the plate here, I got excited.
Thank you.
I don't think we have anything, do we?
Micra Dave?
We had a lot of rain. Just so we all know, we had a lot of rain. There's probably gonna be a lot more coming, so there's gonna be flooding. There's not really much we can do about the flooding in some areas, but if you do think you have an issue, please call the water department. Don't sit here and do it on social media, because our water department will not know and get there effectively. So, make sure you call in. Even if we're closed, call. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Carter.
Mayor, if I could just make a couple of comments regarding public works. I just want to thank all of our guys. I know the record-breaking rain we had, they went above and beyond after hours to come out. I was there for a short time, but these guys did a great job of helping out the residents on cleaning certain areas out. Again, it's above and beyond. I just wanted to thank them and recognize them for that. They did a great job.
I would echo that, and I fielded a few calls, and Dave, you followed up on those, and Mike was off for his birthday, so happy birthday, Mr. Casey, and thank you, guys. All right, trustee Mariscal is absent. Dustin, anything under building or property maintenance?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Economic and community development, trustee Kazam.
Yeah, I just wanted to address some questions that were raised at the departmental meeting last week about the comprehensive plan. We've had many meetings over the last two weeks with House Levine, and I feel like they, a lot of people have been asked to supply emails, questions, and those types of things, and I know there's been correspondence going between House Levine and those people with questions, and hopefully they all were answered. And if not, if people still have questions, feel free to reach out to them. Just so everyone knows, the next meeting for the advisory board will be at 6:00 PM on August 5, and that will also be not in person. So, I guess for those of my fellow trustees who had questions, I think one of the main questions was, will it be more interactive? And they were stating that the previous meeting was, just the nature of it, was less interactive, but going forward, it will be more interactive. So, if you have any more questions, please address them to me, and I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, trustee Kazam. Okay, on to administration. Trustee Gett.
Thank you. Mayor Phelan and I have nothing reported this time unless the chief has.
No, just a comprehensive plan, which trustee Kazam did an outstanding job. That's the only thing that we have.
Thank you. We would be at fire. Trustee Weisenberg.
Thanks, Mayor. I have nothing to report.
Chief Walters, anything right now?
I do want to mention something. Past weekend, we were having that rainstorm. We had a request from a business in our community that had been flooded, and they were filled with water, and they needed assistance. I know they contacted the mayor, the mayor got ahold of us, got ahold of me, and I got ahold of our firefighters when we went down and helped them. That was a BMW. They were flooded down there, and we spent three and a half, well, about three hours, three and a half hours down there, we helped them get the water out of it. So, I'm bringing that up to thank our firefighters for doing that, because all I did was send out a text, and they showed up. I had nine guys in no time, so kudos to them.
Well, and I want to thank you and thank everyone who answered that call. I know we have a policy in place, but sometimes rules are, need to be broken or bent, let's say bent, but I did get a call from the VFW, and Chief Sutton and I also visited that site, and Dave visited the site. The flooding there was unlike any other time, and it was inside the building, so I immediately called Chief Walters, and we talked, and he figured out a solution, and thank you all on Peoria Heights Fire that went down and helped them get the water out of the building. We're looking at long-term solutions for that property, so that was an unusual rain, but the flooding was terrible. So, thanks to everyone who helped out on that. Lastly, police. Trustee DeVor.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to remind everyone that we have an ordinance in place for anyone who solicits the residents of the village. They do have to be registered. They have to let us know. This is so that we can verify that they are legitimate companies, that they're not harassing our residents. So, right now on our website, we currently have zero people registered allowed to solicit, but there have, we have been getting calls and complaints about people soliciting, but we're getting those calls a day or two later. So, if anyone is having people solicit, you need to ask them for their permit. If they don't have one, please let us know right away, so we can take care of that. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Okay, we would be at old business. Any old business to come before the board? Hearing none, we'll get right into new business. The first is approval of ordinance 2020-1630, an ordinance providing for the vacation of an alley between East Glen Avenue and East Samuel Avenue. Trustee Carter, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2020-1630.
Second, please.
Second.
All right, go ahead, trustee Carter.
Okay, like we talked the last meeting, this is an alley between 1516 Glen Avenue and East Samuel Avenue. They are, they're wanting to close the alley off, right? Or just in...
Sorry, it's green space now, so it's just vacation.
Okay, so it's vacant, and it's green. It's not like there's an alley in there right now, so they're just wanting access to it.
Public Works is okay with this, right?
Yes, I mean, the gentleman's been maintaining it for years, so it's had its easements. It's just green space, it's correct. It's a nice, nice parcel. All we got easement rights to get through there, the secondary, because there is utilities that run down the back.
And with this, we do, right?
Correct. It's subject to all easements that are of record, so we're covered on that. The only other point that's in there is, it's customary when you vacate a street or an alley, that the owner that's going to take title to that property pays something to the village. A lot of that, a lot of times, that's to offset the cost that the village occurs to do a plat, and this property owner already did the plat, they did it on their own and incurred that cost. So, I don't know if the village board wants to have them pay some kind, I mean, theoretically, I mean, we are conveying property that the village owns to these homeowners, so it's up to the village board if you want to ask for $500 or a thousand.
Is that why that dollar mark is blank?
That's why the dollar space is left blank.
So, didn't we agree, I think, your attorney fees would go in there? That's all that we...
I can't remember what we discussed at the last meeting. I've had so many vacation ordinance of recently that I'm starting to all kind of blur together, but I don't think it would be inappropriate to say $250.
I feel like, counsel, you suggested that there weren't, there wasn't a lot of time in this particular...
There really isn't a lot of time, you know. I mean, I had drafted ordinance, and I communicated with attorney.
I would recommend that we follow the same rule of thumb that we did the last time we vacated an alley, and I think that was attorney fees, that's the only thing we did charge. I think we should follow suit. It's my recommendation, do the same. I think that's...
There were, that was Rockaway, if I'm not mistaken, and so I'd be happy to...
That took a little longer.
Oh, yeah, there was a lot more involved with that than this one. I would estimate that it would be $200 to $300. I can get an exact figure. If the board approves it, subjects that figure being plugged into the ordinance, that's fine.
Okay, anyone else? So, we're approving this tonight contingent on your fees being...
I'll give an exact figure to the clerk and...
Okay, madam clerk.
Just a moment while I get that in here. Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
Trustee DeVor.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is approval of ordinance 2020-1631, an ordinance providing for the vacation of an alley at 4615 North Prospect Road. Trustee Carter, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2020-1631.
In a second?
Second.
Go ahead, trustee Carter.
Okay, so this is kind of like the same thing, but it's 4615 North Prospect.
Yep, same thing. We talked about this one, it's right behind the Atrium Hotel. One owner owns all of that property, the hotel, it's Atrium Hotel LLC, and, you know, so there's no other property owners that are gonna be affected, and they paid for the plat, so I think probably we should do the same thing we did with the one on Glen.
Any discussion?
So, yeah, I'm not done yet. It doesn't have...
Yeah, I notice I did not put that same blank space, but it's easily added.
Okay, then I would recommend that we add it.
I think this one would probably be a little less...
Okay, so I recommend that we add it and then do what we did with the last one.
Everyone understand? Any discussion? Madam clerk.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
Trustee DeVor.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, approval of a resolution to retroactively authorize $5,888.34 of state motor fuel tax funds for the overage amount spent on roadway salt. Trustee Carter, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve the resolution of retroactively authorizing the $5,888.34.
In a second?
Second.
All right, please proceed. Trustee Carter.
Okay, this is just something that has happened. I mean, it's, we have to pay for salt that we didn't, that we have to get, or that we needed at the time, and so I don't know what else we want. We already discussed it, so anybody else have any questions on it?
Any questions? I think we've gone over this in departmental, so if you're ready to vote, madam clerk.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
Trustee DeVor.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, approval of ordinance 2020-1632, an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter III of the Village Code of the village of Peoria Heights for the purpose of amending the hotel and motel room renting tax. Trustee Kazam, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Go ahead, trustee Kazam.
So, we also discussed this at our last departmental meeting. I guess the highlights from this are that it will commence on October 1, 2020, and that it's a 5% tax. Is that right, counsel?
That's right, and again, we have this ordinance on the books, it's just, A's of our recommended that we sort of adopt a model ordinance, and all of the internet meeting companies are used to the model ordinance, so that was the reason they gave. It's really not a major substantive change at all. The fact that there's hardly any substantive change, things are just organized differently, so it's just really an effort to capture more of that revenue, especially from online accounts.
Yeah, I think it's just bringing it up to current, like, procedure, so...
Any discussion?
How does the 5% compare to surrounding areas? Is that...
Pretty much every night it goes a 5% and it's maximum.
Okay, madam clerk, whenever you're ready.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
Trustee DeVor.
Aye.
And that passes. Next is approval of a site plan application filed by the KDB Group LLC and Atrium Hotel LLC, seeking approval of a site plan for development of a hotel on the property located at 4615 North Prospect Road. Trustee Kazam, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve this.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Go ahead, trustee Kazam.
So, just to remind everyone, this is a, these are two, I believe, two minor requests. First, it's a very minimal balcony overhang, and the second one would be an encroachment on durier with a wall. Is there a third?
First, we need to do the site plan.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I was on, I was already moved on to the next thing.
You've got a long line ahead of you.
Okay, sorry. So, we saw the site plan at the last meeting, and we've actually seen it for quite a while, but I think that we all agreed that it was attractive and in harmony with everything else that's going on here.
Mr. Berkland, any comment?
None.
Okay. Any comment or questions from the board? All right, madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
Trustee DeVor.
Aye.
And that passes. Next is approval of a right-of-way license for the Atrium Hotel. Trustee Kazam, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve this.
In a second?
Second.
All right.
Okay, so now going back to my previous comments, and I believe it's just two requests. First is a slight balcony overhang, which I think is like, am I remembering this right? Two in, two feet, okay, two inches or two feet. And secondly, the encroachment on durier for continuation of an existing wall.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Since those are technically on the village right-of-way, I wanted a document, a permanent document, that that permission had been granted. It's not really a variance. They asked for a variance, went through ZBA on the variance request, and the ZBA approved that. Since this is actually using, technically using village property, even with the balcony, it's, you know, our right-of-way extends up into the air theoretically, so this is just a way to document that. The only real requirement on the hotel's part, the property owner's part, is to ensure the village for any incidents that happen, you know, in that vicinity on the right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Any questions? Madam clerk.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
Trustee DeVor.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Next is approval of the Peoria Heights Congregational Church Christian Concert on Saturday, August 22, 2020. Trustee Kazam, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve this.
And do I have a second? Second. Okay, Rick, welcome. Rick Pitzel? So, before you, Mr. Pitzel, before you go ahead, this is a concert been going on for a while. Rick approached me a while back about the concert. I want the concert to go on, I hope you approve this, but we have to err on the side of public safety, so you've coming up, you've come up, Rick, with a plan to ensure that? Would you explain that to the board, please?
So, first of all, it's August 29th, so it's, it's not the 22nd.
Oh, yeah, right here, it said that in our...
But this is the 15th year that we've had this concert here in Tower Park, and we work in conjunction with WCIC, who's the local Christian radio station. So, the plan this year is a couple of things. We're gonna do different. One is, we usually have the church band open up and play, and then we do a stage switch over, and then the national artist comes on and does his thing. We're going to condense that down to just the national artist this year. So, it'll be basically one set, which is about an hour and a half at max. It might only be an hour. Each artist kind of does his own thing, and they might talk a little bit or whatever. So, it would be probably about an hour and a half max, which would be the concert. The other thing that we plan on doing is, we're looking into getting some sanitizing stations. Not sure if we're gonna be able to get those or not. We have somebody checking into that. And then the other thing is, with WCIC, we're going to ask them, as they kind of advertise it for us, and on our posters, we're gonna talk about making sure that everybody understands that social distancing will be required, and that masks will be kind of optional, not, but if you feel like you need to wear a mask, wear a mask. And then we're going to have volunteers kind of police and make sure that we don't have, we have family groups together, but we don't have a bunch of groups, you know, encroaching on each other. We are going to suggest, as, if the park gets full, I don't know how many people are really going to show up for this in this climate, but if they do, if we end up with, you know, groups of people over here, and we got, you know, 10, 15 groups of people over here, then we're going to then put the other people on the church lawn and spread them out over there. We always have the church building open with bathrooms anyhow. We're going to, we get porta-potties, we use the outdoor tower bathrooms, so that's kind of our plan this year. I think, like, working with WCIC, that I think they'll be fine with, you know, helping us advertise the social distancing and the masks, and we'll see how many people want to come out and hear a Christian concert.
Wonderful.
Questions or comments, trustees?
Yeah, how many people do you expect to show up?
You know, it's varied in the past. It's been anything from like a couple hundred to about, you know, 500, 600, but in this day and age, I don't know if we're really gonna get that big of a crowd. My feeling is, we'll probably get something in the couple hundred, you know, range, but I think we have plenty of space, because in the past, even when we have big crowds, I mean, they go all the way back towards the playground, they go way back in here. We got plenty of space over at the church to kind of segregate people, so I think there's room for quite a few people, especially when you say, you know, when a family group can sit together, you have, you know, maybe four or five people together, and you get, you know, 10, 15 groups of four or five people, you could probably fill this up, and then another 10 or 15, so, I mean, you can get probably a lot of people in there if you had to, but I'm not sure how many will actually show up.
Would you require them to stand six feet apart?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, is the social distancing, keeping the groups six feet apart.
They don't stand, they sit.
Yeah, most people bring lawn chairs and sit down, and so if you have a group of like six or seven people with their lawn chairs here, that's a family, you know, we will keep the next family, you know, six feet or more apart from them.
What do the state guidance say on concert? Are concerts back in session now? I've never heard of any concerts.
I believe the number was 250, is what they're recommending.
Less than 250?
Yes.
So, you are chairing this event. We're counting on you to make sure that if groups get too big, that they're sent to the property across the street or elsewhere in the park, correct? Anything else, trustee Weisenberg?
No, I just, you know, you watch the news and the public health department, and the numbers are skyrocketing, so who knows where we're gonna even be in August? I mean, I've heard grumblings that we're on our way back down to phase three. Would phase three eliminate concerts?
Yes.
I, for one, think it's really, you know, I want to applaud you for taking the steps that you've taken to ensure people's safety. I realize that we all have a choice at this point, but I read the literature that you sent in advance, and I think having people sit at the congregational church, knowing that this is not a mulling around, people are not standing and walking around, socializing, from what I understand, they're seated, and I appreciate the fact that you'll have people monitoring that, so...
Yeah, the, you know, the movement around really happened in between like a, you know, the first church band and the second band, then people kind of got up and moved around, and I think we'll eliminate most of that by just having the one, you know, artist, and it's just a single artist, he doesn't have a band, it's, you know, a single artist with a guitar, basically. And, you know, I've talked with him and his people, and he's still very willing to come and do that, so...
Anyone else? Madam clerk.
Trustee Carter.
Aye.
Trustee Kazam.
Aye.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
Trustee DeVor.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Good luck with your event. Next, we would be at approval of non-union employee raises. This was, came up on a previous agenda and was tabled to a date specific, which is tonight, so trustee Gett, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve these much-deserved raises.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Go ahead, trustee Gett.
As you said, this was brought up. Uh, yeah, as you said, this was brought up a while back, and I think before we opened up the villages to our sidewalk restaurants. And there were, there was some concern about how we were going to, we were going to bounce back. We did have the funds to take care of this, this is already on a budget. So I think we need to go ahead and approve this. This is retroactive made first, is that correct, Chief?
Correct.
And get these people their well-deserved pay.
Thank you, trustee Gett. Dustin, anything you want to add before we take questions?
Yes, back in May, my recommendation was to approve the 3% for the six non-union, non-contractual positions. The board took the stance that we wanted to revisit this at tonight's meeting, July 21st, after we had some figures. We're in the middle of, you know, COVID at the time. So what we've done, I explained then, and, and I'll give you a little bit of update now, that we would continue to watch our finances weekly, which we do. Steffi and I have weekly meetings and go over everything from, everything from the budget, not just administration, but across the board. So I'm, I'm very happy, even though that we've, we've had some decrease in revenue, sales tax, we're doing quite well, given the circumstance. Our, our current general fund this year is approximately $161,000. We're looking at, after the first quarter, we will, we should have a surplus of $97,000, which is from last year at this time, we were about at the same, same position. We're not that far off. Some businesses are doing better than others, so it kind of offset that. But I think the biggest reason that we're not taking that big of a hit is because spending is way down. And as I said in May, that we were really going to tighten our belt to make sure that we weren't hit that hard. So we were lucky enough to put a nice surplus in the bank last year, after our huge deficit that we closed. So as I sit here today, my recommendation is the same, that we do proceed with the 3% for the six positions, which comes at $9,615.65. And that is retroactive to May 1. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we're open for questions or comments?
Okay, I have a question, obviously. It's me. I'm all for giving them the raise. I don't have a question debating that. I do have a problem where we delayed our police department on getting their raises until the first quarter. So with that, I, I'm not going to be able to approve this if we can't do the same for the police officers that we put on hold also. My comment.
Well, my, my response is one, I appreciate the support, trustee Carter. As you know, I'm, I'm a little partial to the police department, and my only response to that is, you know, that, that is a contract that we'll be revisiting next month. I will have it on the Public Safety Committee in August for, for the, the board to review the first draft. And that's a little bit different animal. It's a three-to-four-year contract compared to this. This is a, just a, is a cost of living for non-union, non-contractual employees. So as much as I appreciate the support, I also support the work of the staff here at Village Hall, and also the three positions that are being looked at tonight are also three police positions. They're non-union, non-contractual. So that is somewhat covering the police department. So as much as I appreciate that, I also appreciate the work these six individuals do. They, they are administrative positions. They do an outstanding job. It is well-deserved, like all of our employees here. You know, we, we don't have a staff of 200 people. We, we have a great staff that is very efficient, works very hard, and they multitask and wear many hats. So my recommendation is the same, and I do appreciate trustee Carter's kind words, and I do appreciate the board taking this fiscal responsibility back in May. But as we sit here, we will continue to monitor our, our finances moving forward. Stephanie is outstanding, keeping me informed, monthly, weekly, when we meet on this. And we're really considering, we're just coming out of a pandemic, and it could be going, going back the other way. I'm very happy with where we are at financially, so.
Chief, didn't the, wasn't it the unions? Didn't they offer, they're the ones that offered to hold back on this, just that they're being nice and?
That, that is true.
Being, being a good worker with us?
Delaying till after the first quarter was the police department's idea. After ma, meeting with the union, they decided that it'd probably be in their best interest and the village's best interest to table it, to see, to make sure that we're in a, a position, you know, moving forward, so, yes.
Anyone else?
Yeah, real quickly, Mayor. Give me one second. The financials are encouraging. I was one of the trustees that wanted to see the numbers before I made any decision on increases. I just hope that this village board shows the same appreciation for controlling the costs of the citizens of Peoria Heights when it comes to not increasing the burden of the tax leviator this year. So if we're improving increases, if we're, you know, we all know that wages are one of our largest expenses, so the citizens of Peoria Heights cannot afford any more tax increases. The larger the burden, the larger the property tax for all of us. So I support this, as long as we know that later this year, we won't increase the property tax levy.
Thank you, trustee Weisenberg. And I, I wanted to save my remarks to last, but I, I appreciate everyone's caution on this. But believe me, Dustin and I wouldn't recommend anything that we thought we couldn't afford, because we don't ever want to get in a position where we have to look at reducing the workforce. We have a very small, capable workforce, and I am so proud to be able to serve with everyone here in the village of Peoria Heights, both on the board, but especially the employees and this group that we're talking about. They go really, really to great lengths to do their job. And I, again, I understand the caution, but I, I support this. Anyone else want to chime in? Madam Clerk? How about you? I ask you to call the roll, I'm sorry.
Trustee Carter?
Nay.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
Thank you all. Okay, next, we'd be at approval for a one-time water department credit in the amount of $20 for residential water utility accounts. Trustee Gett, I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I make for a, I'm making a motion to approve a one-time water department credit of $20 to the residential water accounts.
In a second, please?
Second.
Trustee Gett?
Uh, yes. Chief Sutton came up with this. I think it's a great idea. He told me about it about a month or so back. Anyhow, to give everybody, because we're, we helped out our businesses, you think it'd be a nice thing to do to our residents, get a little bit of a break on the water bill. You know, $20 credit, that's two months off of the waste collection fee, so I think that's a great idea. And I, anybody else want to comment?
The only thing I'd like to add is, this is derived from the Ripple program, which some of the communities in the state have used this. And we started looking at this, how could we implement this in our community? I know it's, it's, it's small to some and large to others. But this program, basically, it was kind of outlined where you would spend so much money in the community, bring back the receipts, we would give you a credit. We started looking at it and thought, you know what, that's a lot of work. How can we, how can we streamline this without all the red tape? And how about just a direct credit on the water bill? I think that makes more sense. One, it'd be a clerical nightmare for my staff here. I think it's just, it's, plus there's nothing the residents have to do. It's a, it's an automatic credit. It's $20 on your water bill. It will be posted as such. So again, it's, there's nothing the residents have to do, but they can look for it on their water bill. And this, the water, the water is looking at surplus right now. I think that's maybe because everybody's home, using a lot of water. Maybe that's it. But we're pushing a little bit of that back out to you. And the overall cost of this to the village is $51,200, and we still have a surplus. We're just trying to share a little bit of the, little bit of the wealth, if you will. So I'd be more than, I have to answer any questions.
Anyone else? Any questions? Thanks for bringing this to us. I, I know we, we, the board committed and did a lot for local business, and I think we saved a few local businesses. We wanted to do something for the residents here. We recognize it's small, but it, it's a, it's a sign of our appreciation to everyone, and hope this helps you out a little bit. Last thing, I hope, is we continue this trend throughout the year, that we're doing okay with our revenues. I would hope that we might be able to make a donation to a couple of local food pantries at the end of the year, too, in conjunction with doing something for the residents. So keep that in mind. Okay, madam Clerk?
Trustee Carter?
Aye.
Trustee Kazam?
Aye.
Trustee Gett?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Trustee DeBoer?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Last piece of business under new business is discussion of the fire department. Trustee Weisenberg, would you like to start anything out?
Sure, sure, thanks, Mayor. There's been a little bit of movement on this topic since the last meeting we've had. We've all probably by now seen the ordinance that creates the office of the chief of the fire department. We've also gotten the data from Peoria on what would cost the city to provide the fire coverage as an option that was requested by this board. This is just a discussion item on the agenda, so if anyone has any questions regarding those two, that would be an appropriate time to ask them.
Yeah, so Chief, all right, is there anything you, you want to chime in on any of this? How, you?
I haven't really read through.
I came here tonight to answer questions if there are additional questions following the information that I had sent to you that was requested by the board. So that's why I came here.
Just a discussion.
I would like to see movement on this. The first thing that I think needs to be done, and I don't think tonight's the night to do it, is I think everybody needs to be on the same page, to know where this started, where this ended. I think it's fragmented. I don't think everybody knows how this, these whole issues have surfaced. And I do believe you should all have some explanation to that point. That way, we're, we're operating on the same page. It might assuage some anguish from some people, you know, on the, on the board may have regarding certain issues, whether it be my retirement, whether it be the request to move forward with the duty crew, that stuff. I think you need to have the baseline information. And I truly don't believe everybody has all that baseline information, to, to no fault of anybody. Unfortunately, that's just the way it went. And not using this as an excuse, this is not where I thought we would be today, by any stretch of the imagination. What set us back was COVID-19. What set me back was COVID-19, because I actually, working with the mayor, working with the fire department, we had a game plan to move forward. But when the world stopped turning for three months, it stopped us in our tracks. And through that, information still was flowing from different areas, but it wasn't all delineated properly. So I would like to take some time, and I know we had discussed something earlier, to sit down and give you all, from my viewpoint, where we're at right now, where it started, where we're at. Does that make sense? Because I don't think everybody has a clue specifically on the, the duty crew consent, and then actually what the fire department's doing to, to fill the voids that we're going to be facing.
Well, and Chief, this all began pre-COVID, when you shocked me to, to announce something that I was dreading, and that, that's your upcoming retirement. So we all want to ensure public safety, and I think that's what we have to focus on. The board has information. The board has directed administration to provide some options. We have those. But I, I would suggest, after speaking with you and trustee Weisenberg and chief Sutton, that the board convene on a Saturday morning, when we can devote nothing but our full attention to fire. And I, I hope that we look at solutions, because we know that in this world today, I think we would all agree, it's difficult to recruit people. You're having difficulty with volunteers. You have some preferred options. Others may have other options that they want to explore. But again, I hope we take all the information that's been provided to us, respectfully listen to each other, and arrive at some solutions, because your retirement date is ticking away, and you won't say this, but I will. You answer an awful lot of calls. You have dedicated your life to serving and protecting people, and your retirement, again, is coming forth. You answer an awful lot of calls in the daytime. So I'm concerned what happens when that date comes. And we, we want to be, as a board, be prepared for that. So can we work on, by the end of the week, have a date identified on a Saturday morning where we can all agree upon and get together?
I appreciate that opportunity. I think that's, that would work a lot better.
And I would like you to, along with trustee Weisenberg, to prepare some talking points and agenda for that meeting.
Yep, that's fine.
Uh, maybe not action, but things we need to talk about to send to the board for?
And honestly, and like I said earlier, I'd like to clarify everything. So we're all on the very same page, okay? That way, we're on the same playing ground, we just move from there.
Is that agreeable to you, trustee Weisenberg? If it makes sense?
Would all the board be available there on the Saturday, or just?
Well, we'll have Sarah or Dustin send out dates that you're available.
And we'll send an invite out and then post it. It'll be, so everything will be covered.
So would it be the entire board?
Yes.
Oh, yes, yes. It'd be a public meeting, but where we can focus, where you're not tired after work, where we can fo, are worried about getting home, to things you need to take care of at night. So if we could devote a Saturday morning, we'll get Dustin to buy coffee and donuts and just spend the morning talking about that. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. I'll expect you two gentlemen to have some dates to us by the end of the week. Anything else you want to talk about tonight? Trustee Weisenberg on the fire?
Not unless anyone has any questions about what we got from Peoria or the ordinance regarding?
Any question or comment?
Not now, thank you.
Nothing else?
Thank you all. Okay, miscellaneous business? Any miscellaneous business to come for the board?
I just wanted to circle back, Mayor. I neglected to mention two things on the comprehensive plan. One is, one of the questions that was raised last week was a concern that whether or not the efforts done by House Levine and the money that's being spent is community-driven. And I just want to reassure everyone that the, the firms are taking community comments and building on those ideas. And if you would like to review any of those, those comments, they are online, and I will read the website, but isn't it also on our, on our?
I believe so.
On our homepage? But I will do it just for the audience at home. So it's www.hlplanning.com backslash portals backslash Peoria Heights, comp, C-O-M-P, backslash documents, backslash. So that's a difficult one, but it is on our website.
I, I will note that anyone who needs assistance, please contact Administration at 686-2385.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Trustee Kazam, are they going, so when I looked the last time, the portal, was it like the same questions that have been up? Is that going to be the only questionnaire that we have out, or will there be an updated questionnaire?
So that is the questionnaire, but what I'm referring to is the advisory panel and everything that has been done by these firms, both Farnsworth and House Levine to date. So it includes like, comments that were collected both online and also at the Peoria Heights High School meeting, and then their deliverables, and it's very organized. So if you have a hard time looking at that, please contact me, and I'll try to get that information to you.
Thank you.
Any other miscellaneous? Okay, we'd be at the treasurer's report?